All right, all those in favor of this meeting starting? Carrie? Resolved that council accepts Philippe Cormier as coordinator, events coordinator, on a full-time basis and that this individual be subject to approbationary period for six months, for six months, and be it also resolved that Mr. Philippe Cormier's salary be established at Class 1, Level 3 salary grid of the unionized employees as recommended, seconded by Mrs. Sima. Any questions then? All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Let's go on now to announcements. Mrs. Sima, I just wanted to simply say that the Saint Pascal Carnival events start off this week. Everything starts off on Wednesday evening with outside skating at the community skating rink and coffee and donuts will be supplied. And Thursday evening, there'll be children's movie, $2 entrance fee. And Friday, there's going to be a hockey tournament at the Clarence Creek Arena. There will also be events at the community center. And Saturday, there are a couple of things going on. There's the hockey tournament, darts tournament. Tom of the Productions is a show for children, and there's a spaghetti supper, and there's a cabaret show at 8:00 PM for adults. And Sunday, everything caps off with the Saint Pascal Mass, as well as a brunch at the community center. Any other advertisements? I'd just like to raise one particular point. I would like us to get involved into a meeting because of the request that we received from the International Plowing Match organizers that asked us to come up with a request to host the International Plowing Match in a few years hence. So we'd like to meet more with this. So this is not an announcement then? It's not an announcement? So we might discuss this in between both meetings. That's about the only time we'll have occasion to meet if we don't meet beforehand. I think it's important, Mr. Mayor, it's a fairly special event. Well, let's not forget one thing, sir. We're talking about tapping into five to 700 volunteers, and you need about 1,000 acres worth of land to hold this particular event. So in any event, let's not talk about this any further right now. Well, it's as the mayor has stated, I'd be ready to discuss this matter between both meetings. Mr. Lalande, well, the Saint Pascal Carnival is followed by the Clarence Creek Carnival that's going to be held in between the 12th and the 21st of February this year, and the opening will be the 12th of February. Mr. Mayor, you have received your invitation. If not, here it is in a formal fashion. So the carnival opens up on that date and activities over the two weeks. The traditional ice race on Sunday, the 21st, as well as a special supper, show combination supper on the 13th. There's going to be draft night on Friday, the 19th of February, I believe. Just asking those tuning in to attend the biggest carnival hosted by the city of Clarence and Rockland. Any other announcements? I'd just like to say that about two weeks ago, we celebrated Volunteers' Night in Clarence Creek, and the lady that was honored that particular evening was Mrs. Thérèse Somer. It was a very nice event, and congratulations to her in what she has done. It was organized by Mrs. Mercedes La Victoire. We also hosted an evening that was sponsored by Rockland Pizza last week that honored one of our members in keeping with the Order of Canada Award that he'll be receiving in February. It's a great honor for Mrs. Lalande, as well as a great honor for the city of Clarence and Rockland. So I believe that's another added bonus for us all. All right then, let's go on now to the question period. If anyone has any questions for town council. Let's go on now to other items, council members' items. Let's go on then to consent items. Are there any items that you'd like to have retrieved from the following list? All right then? So I'm going to read the next item. Yes, consent items? Yes, you can read the next item. All right then. I'd like to withdraw item 10.4 for further discussion. All right, all items that are listed in this section be adopted. Item 10.1, adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting of town council of January the 11th of 2016. 10.2, receipt of the minutes of the following minutes. A, the minutes of the Heritage Advisory Committee of November the 17th, 2015, and B, the minutes of the planning committee meeting of November the 23rd, 2015. 10.3, the following items as recommended by the committee of the poll. A, to approve the amendment to the landscape plan for Clarence Crossing in order to authorize trees within the right of way. B, to reject the legal tender and to authorize the chief administrative officer to get legal services from different firms. 10.5, hiring of an infrastructure and planning director. And 10.6, hiring of a full-time temporary administrative assistant for the infrastructure and planning services, seconded then by Councilor Zant. Any questions? All those in favor then? Carrie, thank you. Let's go on now to 10.4, the item that was withdrawn. Councilor Lalande, be it resolved that the salaries paid from November the 22nd, 2015 to January the 2nd, 2016, in the gross amount of $1,280,505.58 and a net amount of $935,169.55 be adopted as recommended. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to have some clarifications with regards to those salaries that are paid out. I need someone to second my motion. Fine, and then we'll... Let's enter to discussions here. Who is, who seconded? Councilor Simone who seconded the motion. I was taking a look at the salaries paid out for the month of December. They amounted $566,794 over and above the salaries paid out in November, and we're talking about $468,000 more than October, and $565,000 more than September, and $450,000 higher than in August. Now, I'm just, I just asked the accounts payable folks explanations, and they were supposed to come up with answers tonight. Because I believe that they were all aware that I was coming up with that question, and so therefore, yeah, we'll revisit this at 7:15 then. Fine, let's set it aside until the proper people are here to answer, or the finance director is here to answer any questions we might have in regards to this then. That's fine. Item 11.1 or 11.2? Yes, to enter into a, or be it resolved that council adopt bylaw 2016 dash, well, to adopt a signature of a contract with Tomlinson Environmental Services Limited for the collection of garbage and recycling collection material for an amount of $1,654,143.96 plus HST per year for the next five fiscal years for the 2016-17 to 2020-21, seconded by Councilor Levert. Any questions? Well, Mr. Mayor, I have many questions with regards to this. Firstly, I do believe that because this is a sizable contract, a fairly sizable contract, we should have received a complete copy of that contract beforehand. I spent a lot of hours taking a look at that contract to forget that we have, well, you know, page 66. Let's just take this as an example, Waste Collection Bylaw. Do we have a Waste Collection Bylaw enacted and adopted as I speak at present, as things stand right now? Do we have such a contract or such a bylaw? You're talking about page 66? Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you take a look at the Municipal Waste Collection Bylaw, as may be amended from time to time, do we have a bylaw in place with regard to garbage collection? Do we have that? I wish I could have seen them today, but I spent the whole day looking at it so I could get involved in meetings with... Are you talking about service delivery? It's because you see further in the agreement, yes, they're saying that we're allowed only three bags, but, but, it always refers to a municipal bylaw. What is in the municipal bylaw besides that? Are we allowed to have plastic bags? Because you're not allowed to use plastic bags. Well, Mr. Mayor, we'd already discussed about the quantity of plastic bags to be used. We modified this. There is a bylaw that dictates that part. It's just on the collection of the leaves and things like that, that the bylaw would not speak to because of the disposal site restrictions. Well, the gentleman from Tomlinson is here. Well, it's not going to be in our bylaw because we've always had a drop-off site, so we'd need to amend our existing bylaw. But the fact that you're talking about leaves at the present time, this would only allow either paper bag or a container. No plastic bags allowed. You wouldn't pick up a plastic bag with leaves and grass in it. Correct. That was one of them. And the other one, page 69, right on top of the page states, the contractor's safety policy has to be given to the city by January the 1st, 2016. Now, we received that certification from Health and Safety. Well, we received that at the time of tendering, yes. Page 17, the extra charges are in there. With regards to extra charges, you never know how much is going to be over and above what has been stated because the charge, the price that we have is the number of tons that are specified when we're not tendering. That's correct. Over that, we have to pay according to the cost per ton. Correct. And then number 77, that is a very, very important point, and I think that Tomlinson, being a big company, should be covered. But the insurance is very, very important in this case because I remember going back a few years ago that the city had hurt a contractor, there was an accident involved, and we were to be out fully responsible because we're not covered. They have to be, to supply this to the city, the WSIB registration and everything. Well, I'm not too worried about Tomlinson with their insurance. They're a big company, and so therefore, well, correct, we had a full review from our insurance broker on all documentation, and they're satisfied that we're covered. Well, Tomlinson, Tomlinson is fully covered for the risk. And the other one? Well, it's very small. It's very minor. It's just the name of a person that needs to be changed. The former MP's name needs to be changed. We had this, or his name in there. Fine, and also page 96, let me see here. Another question, the bids in the commercial sector. I'd like to, according to this, I'd like clarification. Now, if they have cardboard boxes and garbage, are they going to pay more? Because they're talking about corrugated cardboard, which is supposed to be separate. Well, the answer to your question is that it is a mixed commodity, so unfortunately, that material goes garbage. Garbage, it does getting picked up. It does get picked up, but you're not encouraging your business to recycle. Yes, but it's going to be picked up. Yes, correct, correct, that's fine. Well, you know, I just wanted to verify that. Sorry, Doug Palmer, Tomlinson Environmental Engineer. I feel like I'm breaking into a conversation, being uninvited. Yes, I know that I've noticed you being here since the beginning of the, noticed you since the beginning of this particular meeting, so welcome. In this contract that we talked about, the curb side pickup also involves yard waste as well. Yes, because I'm pretty sure we talked about this, and we said, let's just vote on this now, and we'll go back to discuss these later. Well, the discussion revolved around leaving the stations open or not. So that discussion still needs to open or to happen. We need to report back to you to determine whether or not we're going to continue leaving the station open because of bi-weekly pickups, right? You know, we were concerned about having weekly pickups. Well, that's what my comment really is about because if we're not allowed plastic bags, and let's say I put out my paper ba-bag that's full, and it rains the next morning, and that morning, he'll, well, not you, but Tammy Tomlinson will pick it up. The thing is going to bust it open and leave the garbage strewn about. Who's going to pick it up? The citizen or the person in charge of garbage pickup? You see, this is a serious matter because I don't want this to tackle, and nobody wants to receive hundreds of calls either, especially during the rainy season, to pick up waste stemming from paper bag. And we'd need to consider what we allowed to be picked up. And my whole point to have this transfer station left open is because of this specific thing. Well, we'll be reporting back to you. Well, that's, hopefully, when we'll be hearing about this. Well, we're not there yet, of course. We've had previous discussions. Hopefully, we'll come up with a solution. Well, Mr. Mayor, we're voting on this tonight, so I just want to make sure. I just want to make sure that my vote goes yes. I want to make sure that this issue is looked at, and not, when we discussed it the last time, we said we're going to review, either keeping the transfer station open or going to garbage waste collection every week. That was a discussion that we said, we cannot sit down with Tomlinson and negotiate a contract for picking up waste every week because we do not have a contract with them. Let's settle the contract. Now, when we signed the contract, we sat down, and then we sit down with these people, and we look at the waste collection pattern. Well, when the leaves were picked up, didn't, well, typically, a yard bag will last between three or four weights, and typically, one rain will not take off the bottom of the bag. And the reason to stay away from plastic, well, I understand the reason for plastic, and you can't mix commodities. It just makes, I understand, sir, but we're going to have to have a conversation about what we do if a bag busts. Well, typically, typically, the collector sees that the bag is torn and contacts us. If we pick it up and make a mess, typically, the contractor cleans that mess up. The bag is ripped prior to getting there. It gets, it depends on the bylaw that you guys will write, of course. We see, you'd be, you have to be diligent to clean it up. That doesn't mean that he's going to make a serious effort to pick this up. In any event, if you have a plastic bag strewn up all over the lawn and the contents, the contractor won't pick it up. So regarding the containers, I see that we have three containers. What happens? That in 2018, we have tremendous growth in commercial. How do we recharge this? Is this in our tonnage? Because I see that it's in yards. Is this in our tonnage? Yes. I hope, I hope it does grow, really. We charge more, that's right. Because these people will receive the bill for waste collection. I agree. And as the growth happens, the taxation happens to pay the cost of collection. All right. And then there is a reason they're mentioning, they're describing the container. It's, so we picked Tomlinson, and I just wanted this to be cleared up. The only difference is that you're dealing with cardboard by the yard. The waste is by the ton, the OCC or the cardboard is by the yard. All right then. Page 92 also, item 2.2, the contractor shall collect all garbage, recycling material, and yard waste, and leave the waste in the designated collection area. Does that mean what the mayor had brought up one time, where we might change having a location, like we had the transfer station before, that they would go and pick it up Does that not refer to that collection area for that date? Is that not what it specifies? Well, this is curb side pickup. We're not going to the transfer station, you know. It's not going to the transfer station. So this means curb side collection. Well, look, if we keep the transfer station open, it will remain the city's responsibility to pick up what's left at the transfer station because it's not considered curbside. All right, any other questions then? As I said, for recycling, I'm just wondering about the plastic recycling bags that you put in to retain stuff in. Well, plastic bags are perfectly fine for recycling purposes, but you can't put grass and leaves in plastic bags. No, that's right. You know, when that goes to the recovery station, the bags get shredded, you see. So, all right then. Any other questions then? Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to request that a vote be taken on this because it's going to cost a minimum of $250,000 over and above what has been stated in keeping with all discussions that we've entered into, we're going to accumulate certainly more than 20 tons per week. So there's a registered vote that was called. Councilor Lalande opposed. Councilor Zant in favor? Monsieur Chouignard in favor? Mr. Lalande in favor? Mrs. Sima in favor? Monsieur Simonon? Monsieur Jertin in favor? Very good. Accounts payable, be it resolved that the accounts paid from December 9th, 2015 to January the 15th, 2016, in the amount of $398,470 be adopted as presented, seconded by? Yes, any questions? Questions? Mr. Mayor, I had two questions. I'm coming back to page 61. The community center here in Bourgette, it costs us $42,000. As I stated to Pierre this afternoon, I sincerely believe that we should have applied to Trillium. Now, they were aware of that. It was something else, another item that was already included in the budget, but this is money that we're losing and that we can recoup. And nonprofit organizations are registered in the same way that the group that administers the community center is registered, and so they are eligible. This has been done, yes, the work has been done. The work has been done. You know, each and every time that there is work performed in the community center, we're always repairing the roof. No, we're still repairing the roof. Now, in the agreement, the administrator is responsible for capital expenditures, and the Bourgette community is responsible for administrative means or reasons. They could have been eligible to apply for the grant. As long as we're not talking about an extension, no, the sum is already set in reserve. You see, this is a capital expenditure program that had already previously been approved. Now, the work has not been performed. However, if you'll recall, last week with regards to the roof that was, roof work that was supposed to be done, we were supposed to adopt a means of construction that would allow us to repair the roof and after structural study, studies that were conducted. It was recommended to, it was not recommended to build a new roof over the existing roof. So probably, we're talking here with regards to potential repairs about a membrane to be extended over the length of breadth and breadth of the, of the area to be covered. It seems to me that we don't receive our fair share. I believe that we've applied for grants. I don't know if there's a limit as to how many projects they can apply for. And when we're dealing with October, it was not at the time in which new criteria was to be, or were to be released to meet Trillium's expectations. Some organizations are deemed to be, for example, able to request for grants, but they need to go through a type of training offered them before they apply for grants, if I'm not mistaken, training offered by the ministry. Well, we'll look into that, yes. However, it stands to reason that when grants do become available, we'll certainly apply for them. We certainly shall. Very good. Any other questions then? Well, yes. The last one, these are $107,947 for roadwork. Well, you know, we've sent $175,000 beforehand, and this has been lasting for the past two, three years. You see, the contractor works on Highway 17. Well, that's right. We're not talking about work that was performed from Edward to Puyatt. Yes, but it's part and parcel. You see, when we were performing work on Albert and everything, that was part and parcel of that particular contract. There were many areas to be covered by roadwork in that particular area. Fine, that's all I had to... Do you want to, because we tabled the pay-related question. Mrs. Bolzik is in attendance. I'm sorry if I'm a bit late. That's okay, Mrs. Bolzik. Fine. So let's vote on the accounts payable. All those in favor? Are you ready, Mrs. Bolzik, or would you like us to revisit this issue? Question, Mr. Lalande? Yes, I'm wondering why, I'm wondering why, from November to December, in December, we received an invoice of $1,280,505, and the November one is $713,531, which is a $706,714 amount over and above the previous month, and in October, there are $405,000 over and above, and in September, $551,395 more, and in the month of August, there are $455,000 more. Why? Well, I took a look at the information, is that one of the reasons is that we have one paycheck to cover from the... paycheck to cover from the last of December up to the beginning of January. The other reason is that we had to pay for employees, I'm sorry, for the, not for the employees, but the firefighters. We were also paying sick leave, a 30% sick leave ratio that is paid each and every year, 30% of the non-utilized amount, non-utilized number of days. And the hours, the banked hours that needed to be paid, the banked hours that we have to pay to get rid of the banked hours that were accumulated at the end of each and every hour, a year, should I say, I apologize. I need to have a detailed account of that. Now, given the amounts that I've put forward to you, those are considerable amounts, you know, even given those reasons you've given, you've handed to me this morning or this evening. When I talk about the $830,000, different. Well, the $830,000 stemmed from two pays that were handed out in November. Well, I imagine it must be the September pay. If you wish, I could give you a call tomorrow, and I can give you a detailed account, yes? You can step into, I'll go by your office. From a clarification standpoint, you said that the end of each and every year, we pay what's remaining in the overtime banked hours. So they have the right to either take the overtime or to bank those hours, and those eventually, those hours will eventually be paid in overtime. So everything has to be paid at the end of the year, cash-wise, right? Yes. They can bank the time during the course of the year, but they are paid at the end of the year. You know, some folks do bank their hours, and the hours are not paid at the end of the year, and then you wind up with a mishmash of hours in subsequent years. So there are some areas in which I had occasion to work, you know. You were banking those hours, and when you terminated employment or left your job, then you were paid all those banked hours. But I believe that's a unionized related matter in which set guidelines are set down. Yes, a maximum of 50 hours that are banked, and the only time in which banked hours, the only time in which banked hours can be brought back to other years or to subsequent years, if you wish, those need to be approved, if that ever happens. This needs to be approved by the director, by the manager. Fine. So during the course of a given year, we'll have gone over and above the $400,000 mark with regards to overtime. I'd also like to have a detailed report to determine how much money we've spent over and above the forecasted limit. All right? Yes. Now, concerning banked hours, we're talking about $23,000. Some odd dollars, and for sick leave, it's $65,000. You see, as we closed up City Hall, there are limits on those banks, and by paying the banks out at the end of each year, it reduces the liability of the corporation, so we don't have a large fiscal liability. We start the year off free and clear. So $23,000, and $80,000 also, and $89,000, nearly $82,000 for firefighting services. And the last pay was equivalent to $439,000, which was the third pay in the cycle, in the pay cycle, if you wish. All right then. Let's revisit item 12. Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilor Levan. Given those hours, are these looked upon as overtime hours, or do we call those banked hours? Well, one is the same as the other. Overtime, banked are both terms that signify the same thing. Is it one for one or time and a half? Time and a half. Well, you know, if they've banked 50 hours at a ratio of 1.5, this, it's time and a half given to union agreements that were arrived at. You know, those unions are quite, quite strict with regards to the application of things. No other questions? Let's go on now to item 12, municipal bylaws. Firstly, all those in favor for ratifying accounts paid. Be resolved that following bylaws be adopted. Let's go on to bylaws. Now, 12.1, 2016-07, to amend a bylaw, 2015-176, being a bylaw to actualize certain user fees and charges for the city of Clarence and Rockland. 12.2, 2016-08, to appoint fence viewers and establish their remuneration. Seconded by, Councilor Chouignard. Mr. Mayor, I can, I wish to congratulate the bylaw people for having coming up with their pertinent bylaw with regards to appointing fence viewers. We've faced two similar type situations tonight that gave rise to difficulties. My comment is that these folks come from the Alfred area. These are people that come from our neck of the woods, basically. Those people have had occasion to encounter similar type situations that we are now encountering here in Clarence and Rockland. Now, the three individuals that were, there were three individuals that were approached also, yes. What happens was this is that we received an application, so therefore, we had to move quickly on it, and we didn't proceed to any advertisements and newspapers as we were required to do in the ordinary course of affairs. And we'd approached neighboring municipalities to determine whether or not, to determine whether or not they'd, they already had, under their particular hire, bylaw enforcement people that were aware of fence viewing specifications and requests, and we contacted Alfred Plantage Né, and all of those were appointed to service also Clarence and Rockland at that point in time because they're cognizant of the work that needs to be done. Mr. Levan, do we often deal with fence viewers? Well, I believe that when we had occasion to look into the matter, I believe that the last request for such services dates back to 2007. Well, I believe that, you know, some animals were left outside to graze, and especially dairy cows and so on and so forth, and that was, had that a certain bearing on fence viewing as they were overlapping onto other neighbors' properties. That was, there has been a dispute amongst certain neighbors for the past three or four years, the one that we're involved in right now. Well, in this particular case, those are pre-existing faces that need to be repaired, that need to be repaired in this particular matter. And we can't come to an agreement. Well, in any event, there are regulations that are fairly strict that we need to follow. I'd just like to make one particular comment, and I was surprised to see it in the documentation that was contained in the regular meeting documentation, but we never had occasion to view this type of documentation beforehand. We received it rather the last minute. Well, you see, we were pressed for time because we'd received an application at the end of December, and we usually are left with 30 days to respond to this application. That's why we had to tackle this at the regular meeting of Town Council, tonight's Mountain. I believe that last year, we faced a similar type situation. Now, the last appointment dates back to 2007, as is stated in the report that is now before you tonight. I see. Would it be possible, when we do have last-minute items that are inserted in the regular meeting agenda, that we might maybe receive a small email, let's say, from the assistant director stating, "Well, here, this is coming. We haven't had time to discuss it yet, but, you know, this bylaw will be appearing before you." Because when we, when I, for example, take a look at this, I'm wondering, you know, is it me? You know, if we had a heads-up, if there's something coming that has not yet been discussed, you know, suddenly, I'm wondering, is it me? Did I not have time to review this? Did I overlook this? You know, this is not an extremely serious matter because it doesn't happen very often. It happens rarely, but some. Councilor Chouignard, let's just make sure that there are not, there are no other similar type situations that will arise like that in the future. It might be wise to look into possible situations that would arise, that, that would warrant that we be advised beforehand, as opposed to, you know, taking a look at some matters opposed to others. So all those in favor, all those in favor by, basically, of all the bylaws that have been read and to adopt those bylaws? Yes, thank you then. All right, confirmatory bylaw. Councilor Zant. Be resolved that the city of Clarence and Rockland Town Council adopt a bylaw, 2016-09, being confirmatory bylaw for the regular meeting of Town Council, held on the 25th of January 2016, seconded by Councilor Simonneau. All those in favor? Well, thank you very much then. Adjourned at 7:33 PM. Wow, that's a record.